I called the Monday, July 23, 2018 Work Session Meeting of Portsmouth City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas-Burt?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mayor Rowe?
Here. Dr. Patton?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. We will begin the first presentations this evening with one of City Council's four big things from the City Council Retreat to tell the Portsmouth story and create a events entity. The Departments of Marketing, Communications, and Tourism conducted an internal and external research to develop this presentation in consultation with Mrs. Karen Scherberger, the creator of Norfolk Fest Events, Ken McDonald of IMG Going, and Bobby Miletta of Beach Events. This presentation was formulated using lessons learned from our previous events entity, best practices, best fit models, and recommendations from our consultants to provide a strategic and regimented path forward. Mr. LaVoyce Pace, Deputy City Manager, is the presenter. The second presentation, Mrs. Nancy Perry, Director of Portsmouth Museums, will provide an update on the Portsmouth Cultural Arts District. The presentation will include goals, demarcated boundaries of the district, the inclusive process used for naming the district, a highlight of identity and branding system and promotions, a comprehensive listing of community partners, and next steps. Creation of the Arts District is another strategic initiative in accomplishing City Council's goals relative to your big four things and telling the Portsmouth story. The creation and promotion of a cultural arts district in Portsmouth is yet another tool in our proverbial toolbox to enhance tourism, economic development, and further establish Portsmouth as a tourist destination. The third and final presentation this evening is the Crawford Gateway Revitalization Strategic Update, which seeks to capitalize on substantial public and private investment by emphasizing the City Council's vision to provide access to the waterfront and reinvigorate downtown with substantial economic development. City Council authorized staff to move forward with planning level projects using existing CIP funds at the City Council Retreat in February. During this update, you will review three concepts for the proposed Stormwater Park at the Civic Center parking lot site. I would like for City Council to engage in a conversation with these options so that the team can move forward with the next steps. Included in the next steps is the identification of funding opportunities to advance one or more of the concepts and to perform additional preliminary engineering work. Mr. James Wright, Chief Engineer, is the presenter. When we come to Mr. Wright's presentation, our city clerk's going to pass out a package to you, but we ask you to keep the package turned down until Mr. Wright asks you to turn it down, okay? We will start with Mr. Pace.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, good evening. Tonight, per your request and per the City Manager's directive, I will provide a brief presentation on the creation of an events entity. Presentation purpose: To provide information and receive direction with regard to moving forward with the creation of a 501(c)(3) quasi-city events entity for the sole purpose of programming and promoting events within the city of Portsmouth. Goals of the events entity: To build events that have local and regional appeal, to create a signature event for Portsmouth, to increase and enhance tourism as it relates to feet on the street and heads in beds, maximize Portsmouth assets and attractions, and also to enhance efforts towards continuing to establish Portsmouth as a destination. Regional comparisons: Comparatively speaking, with regard to municipalities, producing and programming 19 events for a grand total of over $270,000 and attracting over 129 attendees per year, Portsmouth Parks Recreation and Leisure Services and Marketing and Communications and Tourism has yielded a high return on investment for the production and promotional events dollar. When you look at the cities of Hampton and Newport News on the graph, you will see that both cities have created special events divisions that especially responsible for event production and promotion. As with the cities of Norfolk and Virginia Beach, both cities have 501(c)(3) event entities. While there is a significant increase in the number of attendees as compared to localities, there is also significant city funding allocated to both quasi-city event entities. Here, the city of Norfolk invests about $800 to $1 million a year in fest events, while the city of Virginia Beach invests about approximately $2.8 million in beach events. These entities also cultivate and solicit corporate sponsorship as a means to offset production and promotion expenses while also building regional and national recognition and increasing tourism. Here's a list of Portsmouth's 19 events and concerts. Please note that while the Portsmouth Farmers Market is produced by the Portsmouth Partnership, it is also listed in the city code as a city-sponsored event. So technically, this list could be contain 20 events.
Can you go back?
Yeah.
Let us read that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
State of the City, I thought that was a chamber.
It's a chamber event, but city dollars go into it, too.
National Night Out?
National Night Out?
Yeah.
Yeah, that could be added to.
Thank you.
Purpose of city-sponsored events and concerts: Enhances image and quality of life, creates a sense of place, increases our competitive advantage, drives and increases tourism, enhances intrinsic and perceived value, it celebrates cultural heritage, fosters community spirit and passion, creates unity and cohesion, and generates revenue. Potential revenue generating events: Of the 19 events currently programmed and produced by the city, here are seven events that we feel have the potential to generate revenue, cultivate corporate sponsorship, and increase tourism. Event costs, about $176,000, could serve as a portion of the city investment in the event entity. However, it is important to note that when events are programmed by an events entity, the entity has the autonomy to determine whether it is economically feasible and/or financially advantageous to continue producing the event. If the event does not generate revenue, it is highly likely that it will be discontinued. Quality of life and intrinsic value does not supersede revenue generating with private sector events. In other words, if it doesn't make money, it doesn't make sense. Having a board of directors and an advisory board can also assist with these decisions. I want to add here, just for your information, the decision that you all made three years ago for us to create the weekday concert series known now as Sunset Thursdays was a great decision, so much so that last year, we attracted, between the first year and the second year, we attracted over about 24,000 people. Right now, we're midway of the season, and we've, attendance is about 11,457 people. So for all intents and purposes, we're averaging about 1,600 people per concert, and probably right now, we're at about 35,000 people, and this is the third season. So that Sunset Thursday Concert Series event was a great idea from the City Council.
Amazing.
Yeah.
The kids, the old people, the wonderful.
Best practice models: City must use a competitive bid process via request for proposal or a request for information. Applicant's main mission is to produce and promote events with the city of Portsmouth, and they have included some locations for different areas that these events will be produced in. Applicant must apply for or have a registered IRS 501(c)(3) organization status. Applicant must also create a volunteer base and hire administrative staff or overhead in the production, promotion, and programming of events. City funds annual budget must be included, full and part-time staff for promotion and programming. Upon selection, the events entity must solicit and cultivate corporate sponsorship. Of course, those funds will help them to produce those events. City may provide supplemental funding for events that it wishes to have the events entity produce, and the events entity must create a board of directors comprised of city, civic, and business leaders. Next steps: Review specifications of like-event entities within Hampton Roads, i.e. Norfolk Fest Events, Beach Events. Determine the amount of city funding. Establish a start date for the events entity to begin producing events. Work with the Department of Procurement to create the solicitation proposal and also to create a timeline, and provide updates or report backs to council as necessary.
All right. Any questions, Council?
There was a ports event, I mean, was that a city event or was that a partnership?
It was a quasi-501(c)(3).
501(c)(3), mm-hmm.
Event.
At the time, Lynda Lamb created ports events, the old ports events, that produce city events, and at some point, that went away. The partnership used the name of ports events with a particular entity that they use now, but it's not the same, the mission is not the same as what Ms. Lamb's event entity was.
Do we have a name?
No, no, we're just, this is just a ball of plate report back at the request of council for you all to discuss and determine the direction you'd like for us to go. So this is just background.
What was the previous structure ports event? Why was that discontinued?
I wasn't here, so I don't know.
You know, any history on that?
I don't know particularly, but I understand that some of the reason had to do with there not being an adequate database for volunteers to help produce some of those events, and I don't know if the sponsorship dollars actually came in to help offset some of the money that the city gave. So there were several reasons as to why I think it probably went defunct at that time.
You want to answer?
If you know.
Well, I think at the time, there was, maybe the board wasn't as cohesive as it should have been, and there was some disagreement, I think, with the board with, and the city administration. So I think the city manager at that time actually pulled the plug on it, so.
Sir.
So in the other cities comparison, are those paid staff or are they volunteers on the part of the 501(c)(3)?
Go back, keep going. Go back. That's.
Are they, are they paid?
Well, when I had a conversation with Karen Scherberger and also Ken McDonald and Bob and Malati, while they do have a volunteer base, the problem with the volunteer base is a lot of people don't want to volunteer, and so they end up having to hire part-time staff in order to make it work. And so they don't rely on the volunteer base solely by itself, because if they did, that might create another issue. So being able to employ people that work part-time and also full-time with that particular organization is critical, because otherwise, you might not have an events entity. And some of those, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Some of those positions also would include, they would have to have somebody on their staff that does solicitation of sponsorships as well, because the city does not solicit sponsors.
So the, so the volunteers are doing day-to-day operations within the 501(c)(3)?
According to what, what they're saying, no, not day-to-day, every day. They may come out on particular events to help them with setup and breakdown of those events. However, her part-time and full-time staff, those are, those are the staff people that work day-to-day with the organization.
But the 15 that you have here for Norfolk, for example, they're, they're employees of the 501(c)(3)?
Correct.
Which is subsidized by the city tax dollars.
Exactly. And here, up here, that budget where that $800 to $1 million that the city gives them in addition to them being able to raise solicit funds for sponsorship, I think, according to what Karen said, the goal is that they always want to be able to raise as much sponsorship dollars as what the city gives them as a supplement, so that now they're working with a $2 million budget as opposed to a $1 million budget.
But I think the fact of that, I mean, Virginia Beach, to me, is not even a realistic comparison, because it's so much bigger.
Right.
But, but if you look at, at the way Fest Events is even set up, it was back in the days when I was on the original Ports Events Board, and we worked very closely with, with Fest Events, you know, the, the staff at Fest Events and Ports Events, the paid staff, were very minimal in, in that there was a, you know, a director, the director oversaw the finance side of things, but there was somebody who spent all their days soliciting for, you know, contributions. And, and that, that full-time equivalent, you'd have a whole rash of people who worked from maybe April to September, a lot of college students who were, who were in programs like that in college, who didn't have to work full-time, they didn't qualify for any kind of benefits. So unlike the folks we have working for, for the city now, who are also working till 10 o'clock at night on Sunset Thursday, you know, these would be, you know, either volunteers or part-time people who don't come with benefits.
Correct.
Which makes a lot of sense, in that busy time when you're having so many events.
Right. And one of the things that she let me know also is that even though they do have a volunteer base, and even though they do have full and part-time employees, the city does still provide some in-kind services with regard to using equipment. It may not be set up and break down, but so far, it's some of our tents and some of the things that we need, those things are still used for the events entity to help them to free costs.
Dr. Patton?
Thanks, Mayor. One of the things that I'd like to call, call to council's attention, that with these kind of events organizations, they're looking for the municipality to put some, and I'm, we're a small city, so, I mean, we couldn't compare with Virginia Beach or, or even Norfolk, but they're looking for you to put some significant, what they define as seed money, to get them started. To get them started would mean that in a, in a, in a time when sponsorships and, and support to activities and events is not as robust as it used to be, the difficulty is being finding that, even, it took us three years to get a naming sponsor for our pavilion. It's taken about three years, because you're talking significant money, and organizations just are not doing that right now. So the success of any group like this, it cannot be just the city's going to put some money in here and you're going to, they're going to ask for a time period, how many years out before we, you know, get to significant money? And I think that's just something we need to kind of look at and, and maybe do a little more work. For example, I'm looking at Hampton. Now Hampton's saying that they put, they, they put out $201,000 promotional dollars not provided, but they've got 30 minimum events. Now I'm wondering, what are all those events in the 30? Are we just capturing, because the city has a lot of events, they may not be all city-sponsored events, I would like to know, what are they capturing in 30?
Right.
Because 30 seems to be a lot of events, and compare it to our 129 and 140, we're, we're right there. I think we could kind of go back and do a little more, and then come back to you with just kind of a broader summary of where we think we are and how we think we could recommend to go.
Right.
Maybe a little more details on how the organization is actually set up.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the sponsor, sponsorships are, you know, vary from event to event.
Right.
So that requires people that obviously can present themselves in a professional manner and be able to let the potential sponsor know what they're going to get in return. Also, it, it goes beyond money or cash, it can be in-kind as well, so it's a lot of, a lot of variances on that, and also, a lot depends on what are our expectations? What do we want it to do? Obviously, we want it to be in the black, but my, my idea was that we, we wanted to get people here in Portsmouth to change the, some of the perceptions they may have of our city before they even come here, and to get that signature event like, you know, the Jazz Festival in Hampton, Peanut Fest in Suffolk, Harbor Fest in Norfolk, so we can have that signature event and get people here that spend money.
Dr. Patton?
So I'm curious, why, what's the benefit of this structure versus a structure like you see that Hampton has? It doesn't have a 501(c)(3). It almost looked like it's structured similar to Portsmouth. And so what's the benefit of changing our structure to a 501(c)(3)?
I don't think we've answered that question. I think that's the question.
And I'd like for you to research that and find out from Hampton, do they get sponsorships? Do they get FM whatever?
We can do that research.
I think one of those factors is that a lot of companies don't want to sponsor something that's not a 501(c)(3) because they can't.
And that says $13,000 there. How do they get that?
Yeah.
I think a visit back with Hampton is certainly in order.
Somebody had their hand up.
Yes, sir.
So the, so the naming rights with the pavilion, was that through a 501(c)(3) structure?
That was strictly through IMG, IMG Going, which has the contract for it, we were not engaged in that process.
Right, but, but it's not through a 501(c)(3).
No, they didn't do a 501(c)(3).
It's just the whole marketing.
They marketed and sought corporations like banks and other things to consider.
So we've, we've received a major donor through a non-501(c)(3).
Yeah, that's why it's called now the Union Bank and Trust.
But that's them doing that, because we can't do that.
Yeah, we could.
We can't solicit.
Ray's got the floor.
The scary part of this is us going half-baked, half-cocked. You know, we've tried similar, we've done this before, and I think we've heard some of the issues and problems. We need to make sure that we, we really, you know, do our due diligence and homework in advance and not rush into this. One thing we also have to realize that, we're talking about volunteers, some of these events are like all-day, and folks just don't want to volunteer like that all-day, so you have to pay them a stipend or something, you, you need to plan for that and prepare for that, you know? The, I mean, the folks that really, I'm not talking about guides or folks like that to just kind of walk around and give information, I mean, folks that do work, they're not going to volunteer for that, because I think the city has done a lot of that in the past, OX and Rec. So we just need to be very careful as to how we approach that and not be self-defeating, you know? Because it's going to take money to, to get it going and to start, you know, generating some revenue. I think it could be successful if, if it's promoted right, and that's, that, that probably going to cost more, more than $140,000 initially, you know, so.
Well, listening to the conversation around the table, it looks like we want you to get some additional information.
Yes.
And even you suggested that, too.
Yes, I did.
So you have.
Yes, we'll have every comment, and we will proceed and get back at appropriate time.
Yes, sir.
And also, you know, how are you going to go about organizing and putting the board of directors together? Is that something?
We wouldn't do that. That would, yeah.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, well, see, we, from the onset, we were saying we go off with a RFP, so whomever is in this kind of realm of work would put in their proposals that we would have in the RFP exactly the things, as you all have asked them, what are the, that we would determine.
So they may be selected by this entity?
Well, I'm, I wasn't here when ports events, but city of Portsmouth didn't name the board for ports events, did they?
I don't know.
I don't know either. We'll, we'll, we'll find those kinds of things out.
Why don't you do some research on that?
We shall. We've got that, we'll get that.
Other thing I want to do is quantify with regard to events. Here, we counted 19 events that we actually produce. That does not include the events that Renee Spratley logs and that other people in the community are having that actually happen in Portsmouth, because we're focusing on events that we actually produce and program. These other events, you know, as you know, if you get an organization that comes and wants to have an event like Calls, Calls for the Pals, for those kinds of events, even though they happen here in the city, we don't produce anything to help them and provide in-kind, those events are not counted in this number.
Dr. Whitaker?
Also, is there any metric on how the return on investment is measured with these different entities? I see they have a budget, but do we have any idea of what their return is, or even if it's a profit motive? It may be some other goals that they have other than just profit, and so just comparing budget may not give us the total story.
We can, we can check on that and find that out for you. One of the things that kept resonating with Karen Scherberger and also Ken McDonald is that their return on investment had to do with, one, how many people that got into the city, if in fact, they spent additional money in the city, economic impact in terms of coming to restaurants, if they spent money in the local economy, but they would, they didn't provide any metrics as to how they determined that, and that's something that we can bring forward, how we move forward.
We've got it.
Okay. All right. We'll now have Mrs. Nancy Perry, Director of Portsmouth Museums, to present Portsmouth Cultural Arts District update.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, tonight I will be giving you a brief update regarding the Cultural Arts District. I'll be going over the original goals, the map, the naming process, identity and graphics, the next steps we're taking, and the partners we have to date. These were the overall goals when we presented to City Council last year, which was building partnerships, celebrating diversity, engaging the community, enhancing tourism, supporting business development and residential development, and working closely with economic development and tourism. This is the boundary that was adopted. You'll see the yellow is the Cultural Arts District boundary. You'll see some sites that are just outside the boundary in red and blue and a purplish color. Those are critical to the overall offerings that are in the district, and so they're promoted as part of the, of the district. And we have them divided by the churches, museum and educational theater, public art and monuments, businesses, and then you have the district. We've spent a lot of time on the naming of the district, trying to find a, a name for the district. district. We looked at, we had a number of brainstorming sessions with the Museum and Fine Arts Commission, marketing and economic development. We looked at what made Portsmouth and the district unique and what our competitive advantage was. We reviewed other models and we conducted an online survey when we narrowed the names down to two. The consensus was on the name of Portsmouth Cultural Arts District. We also then met with the Commission again, marketing and the Agency of Record, and brainstormed what the logo should look like and what it should look like on banners and other signage. And Lavoris Pace will now talk to you for a minute about identity and branding.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, for your perusal, here are three conceptual designs relative to what the identity system and/or logo system might include. These designs could possibly be used as banners, as a banner program which includes a consistent art element, which you see at the top of those, a sans serif typeface, which is on this one here, where you have Portsmouth Art and Culture District, which is significant of contemporary and/or avant-garde typeface. And finally, a serif typeface, which is more formal and old-world typeface, which hearkens back to the history and heritage of Portsmouth, which is the middle one where it has the serifs on there.
So what's coming up next? We'll be developing a website. We have a grant through the Virginia Tourism Corporation for the development of the website. Aaron Kelly has been working with the Breeden Company and gotten approval from the Downtown Design Commission for a mural to go on the Montgomery Square Building facing Washington Street. The mural is based on the former mural of Crainy Island that was lost when the wall at Cedar Grove Cemetery was destroyed. But this is in much larger scale, much larger impact because the building is much higher than the original wall at Cedar Grove Cemetery. And it will also have images of a battle ensuing. He's obtained funding and it has hoped that it will be completed by the second week of September. He has the same artist that produced the first mural. Supporters of Portsmouth Public Art have launched a fundraising campaign for murals that will be going on the right side of the former Colony Theater facing the farmer's market. So if it's next to the Art and Cultural Center's gift shop on that side of the building. And these murals will be of Ricky Price, Colonel Crawford. No date has been set for the completion of the murals. They're still in the fundraising stage, but we're keeping our fingers crossed that it'll be up by October 6. We'll be launching an awareness campaign and we will be launching the Cultural Arts District, or kickoff for the Cultural Arts District on October 6 in conjunction with OTBA's Museum Day. OTBA held a very successful Museum Day on June 2 and they were looking at doing it again. And the Museum and Fine Arts Commission felt it would be good if we could help augment an already successful day that they had. So I have been working with Nettie Fisher and Audrey Lassiter on plans for October 6. We have a lot of partners already. There will be a full day of activities with a plein air activity where we're hoping to have upwards of 15 artists that will be painting in the community. That will culminate in our arts ceremony and a wet paint sale at the Art Center at the end of the day. In addition to the farmer's market, we also have the flea market that day. We have a book sale at the library as well as a storytime. There'll be performances in the courtyard by the Rhythm Project. We'll have demonstrators with the 5440 quilters who also have an exhibit at the Art Center. We have art activities and glass demonstrations going on in the courtyard, just to name a few. And to date, a few things that are going on, and to date, this is a list of partners that have signed on and committed to doing activities during that day. We'll continue to work with OTBA to flesh out the details for the event. Gail Hart's Dance Studio is committed to performances. The Hampton Roads Arts Community, who will be working on the plein air project. We have a donation from Hansel Union Consulting for one of the awards for the plein air project. The Hill House, the Jewish Cultural Center, Old Town Arts and Music, the Partnership, Railroad Museum, the Rhythm Project with the Virginia Arts Festival, St. John's Episcopal Church will be doing chalk art in their parking lot. TCC Visual Arts Center, the Art League will be doing an art sale on the Court Street side of TCC. And their exhibits will be open as well as Trinity Episcopal Church. This is as of today. There are a lot of other partners that we have not firmed up yet, so I didn't want to put them on a list, and a number of other really unique activities and things that we'll be launching that day. Does anybody have any questions regarding where we are?
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, sir.
I think that the Cultural Arts Center is an opportunity to do something new in Portsmouth. The opportunity to draw people into a historic district or area. Also, with the mural, that mural, will that be a focal point, a highlight of the district?
The one on Washington Street?
Right, the one that you spoke of, Colonel?
Just by its scale, I would think it would be a focal point.
Right.
I've seen some small-scale renderings. It's pretty magnificent. And they have some other ideas of, with the mural and things that you can do electronically, like pulling things up on your phone. But I can't, I guess, explain this to you. I'm not that technologically.
The reason I'm raising it is because Colonel Crawford, that doesn't explain the whole story of Portsmouth. I think that with this new concept, that it's a great opportunity for us to give a more inclusive expression, not to exclude Colonel Crawford because the founding person.
Correct.
But I think it's an opportunity to be more inclusive if we're talking about really drawing people and making them feel like they're a part of this district as well. And I think Colonel Crawford just gives only one side of the story.
Correct.
And I would think we could really capture on that opportunity with you saying that's going to be a great centerpiece to make it a little more inclusive of the Portsmouth community, just not with only Colonel Crawford. Because our art district takes into account a lot of other cultures.
Yes, it does.
That are not reflected by Colonel Crawford.
I have a question, Mayor, members of council, because we started the murals prior to my coming back. When I left, there were no murals. But I don't know if council, with their direction to the Fine Arts Commission or whatever, had anything in place that before a decision on a mural's going to go on a building, that it not come back before council for you all to at least know what's going up or where it's going up? Because as I said to Mrs. Perry, when she announced, or in her presentation, that Colonel Crawford was, someone was getting ready to do Colonel Crawford, that was the first ever knowledge I had of it, was today when she went through her presentation. So I would think that this is just me. If there's a murals or the art district and whatever, yeah, this is something all-new and we're embracing it and council has embraced it. But these are permanent murals that are going up.
Okay, Bill.
I agree with that. I think we need to at least see a sketch of what the artist has in mind. You know, once it gets up and we see it after the fact, it can run into a big problem.
Yeah.
I think Councilman Whitaker's point is well-taken as well, as far as being inclusive and telling the whole Portsmouth story as much as you can on one mural.
Elizabeth.
I'd just like to point out that these murals have been painted and sponsored by private money on private property. The only mural that has, the only time I'm aware of that this council ever actually said yes or no, and was a yes, was the beautiful mural of former Mayor Holly in his golf clothes that is out at City Park on public property. And the very first mural that was painted on the wall that has fallen down at the cemetery and even the Naples Shipyard Museum, we didn't say yes or no. It was just, oh, there it is. You know, there's a mural, as we sit here tonight, on the side of the Barren's Pub Building.
Which we didn't, we didn't know it was there.
That, again, private property, private money. It's a sign. It's, we can't, you know, the city attorney would tell us, we can't control the signage as long as it's not detrimental to...
But I think they have to go through the...
Yeah, it's an art thing. It's not, I mean, I don't think we can control the message.
They went through the design district.
I know that Aaron Kelly's went before the Downtown...
Design.
Design Commission. He took it to them and they approved it. I'm not sure about any of the other murals on public buildings, whether they went to the Downtown Design or not.
I think they did.
Bill.
And I hear what the Vice Mayor is saying and I agree with that to a point, but if something would go awry, they're not going to go to that building owner and they're not going to go to the artist. I know who they'll go to and that's people sitting around this table. But we have so many celebrities through the ages, VIPs from all spectrums, entertainment industry, science industry, Medal of Honor heroes, that, you know, if we want to tell the whole Portsmouth story, we need to make sure we don't overlook some things that I think should be displayed.
Again, we haven't paid for them. These have been privately funded activities.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yeah, I hear what Councilwoman Simmons is saying as far as it being private, private buildings. I think, though, it's still the responsibility of management somewhere to have some conversation with those that are looking to do that. I don't know of any corporate partners that want to be bad partners in a city. I think they want to be welcoming. And I think if these views are expressed, and a lot of times, views may not have just been put on the table. It wasn't that they were trying to exclude, it's just that viewpoint just had not been brought up. Yeah, so, and I think that corporate, whenever names are being attached, they want to be welcoming in the community.
Would you like me to research?
Well, let me speak. I agree with Dr. Whitaker and with Bill that we need to be inclusive. I think about the performing arts, we don't have to reach back to the first year of our 260-some-odd years to find people that we can celebrate. I think the fact that we are doing this in a cultural arts district that we've created implies some type of endorsement. I think that we need to find a way, though, to split the baby. I don't think that we need to over-regulate. But I'm concerned, too, about something going up on a building that is not appropriate, that is not good for the community. And so the answer to, I think, the question that Ms. Perry was going to ask, I think we need to research.
Yes.
How, what has been the approval process to date? What other localities are doing with such art in their created art districts? They don't necessarily have to be Virginia cities.
Okay.
And that we look at, we shouldn't be defined by just one segment of our history. We got 260 years' worth of history to celebrate.
Another mural that comes to mind that's actually on city property, but I don't think any city dollars went into this, is the wonderful mural on the side of the Craddock Branch Library that was all painted by volunteers, all part of the Portsmouth Public Art Group and a whole lot of folks from Craddock. And if you've been out there in the last year, you see the whole side of the building looks like bookshelves. And that's not about a person at all. You know, that's not Ruth Brown or Bill Dill like is on the colony now, but, you know, that's a mural and it's not even in the arts district.
I kind of have to agree with, you know, what the Vice Mayor said about the private property issue, you know, because we've had, you know, presentations recently about, you know, signage where it can't be, you know, based on the content of the signs. So that kind of falls back on some of these murals that's on private property. How can we regulate that? And I know as recently as, I believe it was last week, I saw on the news, there was a residence, I believe it was in Florida, they had the whole house painted like a Van Gogh painting, if I remember who it was. And it was a big lawsuit between the city and them and the lawsuit found in favor of the owners of the property and let them keep it that way. So, you know, I'd like to, you know, hear from, you know, not tonight, but of course from our city attorney as to, you know, what we're getting into and not, you know, get into some of the pitfalls that other jurisdictions have found themselves in.
Right.
It sounds like we already have a process in place. I've heard that the Downtown Design Committee has approved some of them. I guess what we need, that information to research, but also guidance to them. And, you know, I think there hasn't been any issues with them approving what's been done already. So maybe that's the way to go about it, to let them, since that's in place and they've done it, they've been doing it.
Well, we don't know that.
But let's give them, give them some directions if we want input or guidance.
I guess I just have a question with the partners that are going to be participating. Is it the funding or is it just their talents and skills that they're offering for one?
Except for Hansel Consulting, who's made a small donation and Portsmouth Partnership, who's helping with the reception after the plein air. Everybody else is opening their buildings, providing entertainment or volunteering entertainment for the day.
And then the last part of the question is I concur with the inclusive of the whole telling the Portsmouth story of what we are. That's part of what our big, one of our four big things is, is to tell the Portsmouth story. And when you look at the murals that are in other cities, you see a mermaid and then you see, you know, dolphins or fish or something. But we are here a port city and we don't have anything with our water or our ships or anything. And, you know, the war, you know, that was on the Cedar Grove, you know, I know that that wants to go forth, but were there any ideas laid on the table about, here are some things that we can consider? Or was it just, this is what it's going to be and here we are?
Bill.
And what I'm saying is I don't think we need to usurp the process that we have in place, but before the paint is applied, I think it would just...
Give us some courtesy.
Give us an idea of what's in store. I think anytime you do anything like that, the more eyes, better to look what they have and plans. But including more than just the colonial era, I think goes without saying that we should look at doing that. Okay, this has been a good discussion. We're asking the city manager to do additional research.
Yes.
Research on what has been the process to date.
Yes.
We're making assumptions about what we think it has been. We want to come up with a way that makes sure that in our district that we're inclusive and find a way that we can split the baby on this, so to speak.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Last presentation this evening, we will have Mr. James Wright, Chief Engineer, to come forward. to come forward and present the Crawford Gateway Revitalization update. They have to set up some props just a moment. Is this board blocking your? We can see that here.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here to give you the second update for the Crawford Gateway Revitalization Strategy. As Dr. Patton mentioned at your retreat, you authorized staff to move forward with five projects, you authorized staff to move forward with five projects to set the baseline for our redevelopment efforts downtown. So I'll give you an updated project status of these five projects. The future city hall, future city hall space needs evaluation is, the final draft is under review. The future city hall will incorporate contemporary and progressive open space concepts, efficient and effective use of common spaces, access to daylight and views, clear and effective wayfinding, accessibility with integrated security and access control, and efficient and effective use of technology and logical adjacencies. The civic center land use study, which is at the former jail site, is also, that draft is also under final review by city staff. The civic center land use study examines potential future development of the civic center block and equally with the redevelopment strategies downtown. And the Crawford Street Corridor Study is just getting underway. The consultant is setting up their project template and that is a one-year project. So the site selection and preliminary engineering for the public safety complex, the site analysis is complete. We are looking at the preferred site. Once we meet with the management, we will come back to city council with the recommendation for that preferred site. And the stormwater park, I'll look, I will show and tell for you and then we'll go over that here shortly. Just a reminder of the project costs. These are the costs to date for the four projects that are underway. We're looking at just under $370,000. As you remember, the estimated project funding at the very beginning was $475,000 and you see the balance of funding left there. We're still on track to be within our budget. So if you would take a look at the handouts that we just handed out to you. So option one for the stormwater park incorporates green space and open water features. It has bio-retention basins that are located at the northwest corner of the park and proposed water features incorporate constructed wetlands and deep pools to capture and treat runoff. So if you see here, this is the performance area, which is shown right here. With all of the stormwater park concepts, Water Street becomes pedestrian thoroughfare, pedestrian-only with either porous pavement or pervious pavers. You have the, you have a pedestrian bridge, you have connectivity throughout the park with concrete walkways, you have green seating area that also treats stormwater runoff right there. You have bio-retention area in the northwest corner. Bio-retention is a depressed area with engineered soils and landscaping to treat stormwater runoff. You have a pavilion here where you can have.
Pavilion.
A small pavilion area right here, which you can have a rain barrel, the demonstration project to show how to capture and reuse runoff in this area here. You have underground detention. You have the opportunity for some educational signage throughout the park. And you see you have benches at the walkway throughout the constructed wetlands and deep pools. If you would, Mr. Pace, the next slide. So this is, this is a kicker. This is a view that everybody's going to like. So this is looking down at the park. So the north side of the park includes walkways connecting a recessed open performance area with planted steps included for the audience. Walkways connect the performance area, center of the park, where a pavilion, where a covered pavilion is situated. This central walkway continues south to a wooden crossing over water features which extend from the center of the park to the southwestern corner. The walkway continues from the crossing connecting visitors to the open grass area in the southeastern corner of the park. This is option number one.
Is that going to take care of all the water that you're funding for the?
Yes. It's the drainage basin that actually comes down to the water. This part along with Water Street treats all of that water coming into the site. And what you see here in the rendering, you see, you see County Street actually comes through and connects down to the walkway. Pedestrian starts right there where the access is to go back to City Hall. King Street comes through, you can't see it in the picture, is punched through and becomes a street there and there's the number one high street right there in the parking lot.
I love the stair-step-down thing that's designed to flood.
That's cool.
Right.
What's in those buildings? What is?
So these are just, these are just renderings of potential for mixed-use buildings.
I know that, but I mean, so there's no intent, there's no intent right now?
No, sir. This is just to show potential for mixed-use buildings.
Land use.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got you.
And we left, as you can see, the city hall and Water Street buildings in there just to show that this could happen at any point in time throughout the development. It could happen now, it could happen as these things are occurring, but it's just to show you that there's, there's nothing as far as the timeline that restricts you from moving forward with that once you identify funding.
How much underwater, I mean, the underground capacity is there?
So you have, you have underground treatment in this area here. You have the pervious pavement here, bio-retention. You have these grass steps with actual treat runoff. You have constructed wetlands and deep pools right here. And then this performance area actually also serves to treat volume during certain storm events.
Is that like a fountain?
The next one has a fountain.
R B?
The next one has a fountain.
Oh, okay.
Leave that, leave this one up.
Yes, leave that one up, please. So option two. Option two utilizes open green space and underground detention to manage stormwater plays. Retention basins are situated along Water Street on the western side of the park. Underground storage systems are located under the open space and picnic areas and designed to capture and treat all site contributes drainage area. So similar to the option one, Water Street is pedestrian with the pervious pavers. You have bio-retention facilities along that corner, which you have here, the water feature, fountain for families that can go where kids can play in. You have the walkway. The recessed area moves more to the center, still have the steps. You have the walkway with benches along the steps, a walkway from the park to the pedestrian area, and you have concrete tables, latched benches here for people to enjoy. So if you could do that, then that, please. So the north end of the park includes a walkway from the converted Water Street pedestrian area to a water fountain feature that was served as a play area for families. Additional walkway connects from the fountain area to the central feature of the park, a recessed open performance area with planted steps for the audience. Near the center is also a covered pavilion. The walkway continues south from the performance area, leading to concrete picnic tables and an open managed space turf on the southern side of the park.
Ready to go full?
Any questions?
We'll finish.
Option three. So option three largely utilizes open water features including constructed wetlands, wet swales and deep pools to treat stormwater. Constructed wetlands include conserved open space and native plants, creating a natural, sorry, creating a natural area for visitors to enjoy. So here, you have that constructed wetland that we're talking about, but this option also features an observation deck and a wooden walkway back to the pedestrian area and wooden walkway that connects to the, to the concrete walkway. Still, you have the bio-retention, the performance area, the seats. So there are some things, and then you have some steps in the corner for seating or what So the north side of the park includes walkways connecting to a recessed performance area with planted steps included for the audience. Bio-retention bases are located at the northwest corner of the park. Walkways connect the performance area to the center of the park where a covered pavilion is also situated. A central walkway also connects the raised walkway and observation deck, allowing visitors to oversee the water features that comprise the remainder of the park area. And that is this observation deck here and the wetland area and pools adjacent to it, some park space. In the corner, you have some additional steps and seating featured and along, once again, consistent with County Street. So the themes are County Street comes through, Water Street becomes a pedestrian walkway, you have the performance area with the seating, and then depending on what type of stormwater management you have, you have either all green open spaces, mostly water or combinations of the two. But it does treat all the, all the stormwater runoff coming towards that area from the With that, open up the questions or observations about any of the concepts that you have before you.
I'll make a suggestion to my colleagues before we start. What do you think about asking the city manager and her team to make this presentation to the EDA planning commission and also to the public and ask for comments and recommendations on each of these options?
P P I C.
I think that would be great.
We can do that, Mayor and members of council.
And that we want.
To come back.
And I think I'd separate the public meeting to be a standalone meeting so that we hear their recommendations and comments.
Yes, sir. That's a good idea, Mayor. I was suggesting doing like charrettes around different areas of the city to make sure we get as much input as possible.
This is going to be a video, iconic landmark, so let's get, come up with a participation communication plan for us.
We can.
So creative.
It is.
Yeah.
So creative.
Creative.
How did we come to the conclusion that the, all of these would take care of the water volume? I think the mayor mentioned that earlier.
So.
What is that based on?
So our consultants are here with us tonight, W S P. I'd like to acknowledge that they're sitting in the back. The project manager and supervising engineer for the Water Resources Division, Ms. Melissa Simpson, is sitting in the back along with the lead Water Resource Engineer, Ms. Amy Dewey. And they looked at the drainage area coming to the site, looked at the basin, worked with our survey team, got all the information, looked at the pipes, and basically did the engineering to determine what's coming to the site and then what can be treated or what's coming to the site.
Ingenious. So the smart women figured it out.
This is a technical question. The calculation is done on the surface, not the vertical height of the building?
Correct. It's pervious, it's pervious, impervious, managed turf, so all those things.
So those buildings could be three stories or they could be six stories.
Correct.
You're still going to get the same runoff.
Yes, sir.
And that was my question about the air rights. I mean, because I see the buildings with three or four stories, is that as tall as they could be?
They, it's an artist render, they can be as tall.
This is pretend.
This is just, this is, we're just focused on this. This is just.
Just give you scale for the.
Yes. One day we'll be all.
All right. Well, I think we have consensus that we were seeking input from our planning commission, P P I C, the E D A, and at least one, if not several, charrettes for public input.
And also, I would add to that, Mayor, I think the charrettes are great. I would add to that, you remember in February, after the retreat, we came back and hosted and invited the media and others into the council chambers and made a presentation on the Crawford Gateway Revitalization update. And I think we should go back and have something similar along with all of the other engagement that we have done, just to let them know where we are at this point. Okay?
That's good. All right.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Just a question. I've noticed on option one and three, the wetlands and rocky swale area, is that, is that standing water in the picture, is that water that is draining and standing in these areas permanent?
In the constructed wetland areas, you will have some portion that is wet all the time, where you have, where you have the daper pools, that is going to be a wet area. But where you actually have the wetlands, depending on the rain event and the frequency of the rain, depends on how much water is standing in those areas.
So will those have some type of fountain or something to keep it from being stagnant?
Potentially. We haven't got that far. This is just a concept version at this, at this point. Once we get more into the detailed engineering, we'll make a determination as to what and what and if those areas need to be aerated.
For an option two, then, the fountain, is that a splash park?
Yes.
So that would be treated water, it couldn't be stormwater?
We haven't got that far. It's just a concept, but it is a splash park. Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't think that they are defined as a splash park, like the park over there where kids are coming down the elevens. This is more of the order of in Chicago where you have the water that comes, what do you, it's a name for?
Artistic order.
What'd you say, Mayor? I mean.
Artisan, no, artistic.
Yes, artistic, yes.
Not artesian.
Yeah.
Kind of like what they have at the zoo.
Okay, right.
All right, I think we get it.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, we have captured all of the requests of what you would like for us to follow up on and actions, items to come back. We will come back with you with a schedule of how we will have and host all of the charrettes and things with some dates. If you would give us, we will not have all of that set by our next meeting, but the following meeting, the last meeting in August, we'll be ready for that.
We have an additional question.
I have one question, just because you're at the podium, completely unrelated.
Okay.
Because I don't know how to answer the question and I've gotten it a lot. Portside construction.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me why there's so much dirt so high? Is it going to stay that way or is that just the construction?
Two things. Because of the flood zone, the structure has to be elevated to a certain level. And so that, what you see right there with the mound is for the foundation, for the structure.
So is it really going to be up that aisle?
Yes, ma'am.
Wow. That's part of our new.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? That's our agenda. So we've concluded and we'll adjourn this meeting, we'll convene at 5:00 tomorrow.